And you are live.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the October 7th meeting of the East Hampton Town Board. Carol, would you please read the roll call?
Councilwoman Berk Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilwoman Lees.
Present.
Councilwoman Overby. Councilman Bragman.
Here.
Supervisor Vance Goyack.
Uh, Councilwoman Overby, uh, Councilwoman Overby is joining right now.
Thank you.
Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The republic, the Constitution, one nation, with your God under control, liberty, and justice for all. Today, we have six public hearings, which would be followed by public portion, or any member of the public may address us on any topic. As always, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and then we'll have resolutions. Carol, would you read the first public hearing notice, please?
We have Hugh in the, in the waiting room, I believe.
Oh, is Hugh in?
Yep, I'll let him in right now.
We have our town crier, town historian Hugh King.
And, uh, he's, he's not at his chair.
Okay, well, uh, how about we jump back?
That council's homework assignment where I went to school if the professor wasn't there. Homework's canceled.
I'm here.
Sorry, Jeff, you don't get out of the assignment.
It's supposed to wait five minutes. And if I have my doctorate, it's 10 minutes.
He seemed a little bit too anxious.
We were always trying to sneak out there.
Can you, can you put your camera down a little bit lower? It's...
Oh, yeah, sorry.
We're looking at your ceiling. Beautiful.
Yeah, now we see you.
Thank you.
And you have to wait 10 minutes. Loretta has her doctorate. Okay.
Bastard.
Councilman Bragman didn't do his homework. Is that what this is about?
I, I can't speak for him.
Oh, okay.
Did we have homework?
I'm sorry, I lost the reception on that.
I didn't mind, yep.
That's all right, all right. I didn't mind.
Uh-uh.
Okay. Supervisor Vance Goyack, while we, before we start?
Yes.
We had, the library has pictures of all the supervisors and the town board members. Remember, they scanned them?
Yes.
Do you want them to stay there, or do you want them back?
Well, they can. It's fine if they stay there for now. I think if we take them back, we'll need smaller photographs in order to be able to find enough wall space in the public areas to, to actually hang them.
Okay, so they'll keep them there, there.
For now, for now, that's fine. That's great.
Thank you.
So, Hugh, why don't you take it away?
I think he did. He went away.
He went away, okay.
I don't think he understands we're on TV. We're on live.
We're on live, well...
Well, the timer's going.
Trying to cut you a little break here.
All right, Hugh, you're live.
Oh, guys, am I on?
You are, sir.
Yes, you are, sir.
Well, this week, this week, we were going to talk about the Ladies Village Improvement Society.
Right.
Last year was their 125th anniversary, and people were going to try to find some interesting facts about the LVIS. And then after that, I'd like to talk about the Fisher House, okay? So, Councilwoman Gonzalez, I, you said that you have done your work.
I did. So, I found an article in the August 28th, 1947 East Hampton Star, and it reports on a meeting that was held on, uh, that, that previous Monday. So, I just, I just found some of the points that were made just so interesting, and I'd just like to read, read the piece.
Oh, good.
So, "The Amagansett Village Improvement Society met in the school auditorium Monday night. Ms. Janet Ward, First Vice President, presiding. Mrs. Sunset Hasbrook, Membership Committee Chair Chairman, reported 51 new members," which is a lot of new members. "And Mrs. E. Vivian Parsons read the treasurer's report. Ms. Louise Mulford, Chair Chairman of the Budget Committee, submitted the following recommendations. First, that after consultation with town officials, the AVIS should, if necessary, supplement amounts allotted by the town for work in Amagansett on greens, trees, cemetery, and flagpole. After much discussion by members and explanation by Supervisor Herbert L. Mulford of budgeting and apportionment by the town board, the proposal was referred to committee for further consideration. Second, that insurance be kept up on the flagpole." This was adopted. "Third, that the AVIS rejoin the Federation of Village Improvement Societies if the organization still exists. This was referred to the committee until more information is received. Fifth, that the Christmas tree be lighted again this year, the expense not to exceed $35. This was passed. Robert L. Horton, Chairman of the Projects Committee, reported that the Highway Department will attend to the bricking of the business section of Amagansett soon. The AVIS will request the town board to include in the budget appropriations for a sidewalk along Indian Well Highway to the beach. It was noted that steps at the library are in need of repair, and the committee will inquire as to cost of repairs. The bylaws will be revised, making a change in dues and to allow men of the organization to vote at the meetings. Mrs. John Howell, Chairman of the Committee in Charge of a Bronze Marker, read the proposed inscription. Ms. Ward named committees to help with the September 5th concert. Mrs. Sunset Hasbrook, tickets. Mrs. Robert Horton, programs. Mrs. Clement Icon, shares. And Mrs. Joseph Sepstic, flowers."
Wow.
Just interesting, it's, you know, the supervisor sounds like attended the meeting, and, you know, $35 to get the Christmas tree lit, and that they were, you know, you know, 100 years later, they're still taking care of, you know, the village and the trees and the greens, and it's pretty remarkable.
Well, Robert Horton was the principal of Amagansett School, and he was the one who made a film of the 38 Hurricane. I don't know if we've ever, you have ever seen it. After the hurricane was over, uh, he made a film, and Ms. Janet Ward was the fifth grade teacher in Amagansett. We called her George Washington.
And what was also interesting is that they had, uh, men were members, and at this point, they were going to allow them to vote.
Well, I thought we were going to be talking about the Ladies Village Improvement Society of East Hampton, but this is just as interesting.
Oh, I, I, I wrote down AVIS. That's what I thought you said.
I wrote down LVIS.
Oh, really? Oh, and I'm a member of LVIS. I could have done that, too.
Well, that's all right. This is great. This is great, because the AVIS, Amagansett Village Improvement Society, wait a minute, they've had their 100th anniversary.
That's why, and that's what we were talking about last time. That's why I thought you said it.
You did it. Yeah, it's all right. We got both of them. We got both of them done. Okay, Councilman Lees is not here?
I am, sir.
Oh, we don't, we didn't have to wait for him. Okay, go ahead.
Are you, um, "For the LVIS, uh, in 1895, the area surrounding the newly constructed Long Island Railroad Station was unsightly, and Main Street was unpaved and unbearably dusty. Twenty-one East Hampton women decided the time, time had come to eliminate these and many other problems of a growing East Hampton. This is when the Ladies Village Improvement Society was formed at the, at where? Where was their first meeting formed?"
Clinton Hall?
Very good. Clinton Academy Annex, and began raising funds to water down the dusty Main Street, sweep the crosswalks, clean up the areas around the station, install oil lamps on Main Street, and hire a lamplighter. Their first fundraising activity was in 1895, and it was, uh, supper for New Year's Eve. Uh, the following July saw the first LVIS fair, which is spectacular, an undertaking that was, has become a successful tradition. Uh, and what my favorite is, and which I have at home, didn't bring, I got my first one from my mother, and I believe they still sell them every couple of years, they come up with a new one every couple of years, was the first LVIS cookbook.
Yay.
If you're ever looking for a very interesting piece of history, a written history, it would be all of the wonderful, um, recipes that the ladies of the Ladies Village Improvement Society, you can find them online on eBay dating back to, you can get them in print, and I saw, I have one, I think, from like 1939 all the way through today. So, uh, thank you very much to the LVIS, and also thank you to their president, Ms. Jennifer Tarbet.
Great. Um, so we've got the AVIS and the LVIS. This is great. Supervisor Vance Goyack?
Uh, so I was prepared to talk a little bit about the LVIS. Uh, this organization has done probably more than any in shaping what, uh, has become the, the village of East Hampton that we know today. Uh, they're really responsible for protecting and restoring, uh, elm trees, um, and, you know, they plant, I think, no less than 20 trees a year in the village, um, and, you know, really have contributed in so many different ways. I, I think they're actually responsible for the first sidewalks in, in the village. Uh, I think they were influential in lobbying towards, um, I think David mentioned, they, they actually worked on keeping the dust down before the roads were paved by, uh, having sprinkler wagon go across the, the, uh, the dusty roads. And, uh, I think, uh, one, one thing that I didn't know was that there was a gas station that, um, gas stations along Main Street, they fought against those, and prevented one from also going up at Sheepfold, which is that little triangle in front of the East Hampton Post Office that's fenced out. That was the original Sheepfold in, uh, the village of East Hampton. Uh, I suspect they were also very, um, very much involved with, uh, the removal and preservation of the land, uh, where Mark R. Buick used to be, and opening up that, that vista and the green across from the Sheepfold. And, you know, to this day, uh, continue to help shape and protect, uh, the, the beautiful East Hampton Village. So, thank you all at LVIS for your contribution for many, many years now.
Councilwoman Overby?
Sure. So, I was going to talk about, um, shaping young people, because not only has LVIS, um, shaped East Hampton Village, but also has given out scholarships to, um, seniors from the East Hampton High School. So, the scholarship program started in 1954, and they gave out that year $200 in scholarships. Today, they give out $150,000 in scholarship each year to East Hampton High School seniors, and they also select two women who are going back to college, who live in the town of East Hampton after they've been out of school, um, for some time. So, and they are chosen on the basis of academic performance, um, essays that are submitted, and community service. And I think they are an important part of our young people's lives, as well as our, uh, village life.
Sylvia, I'm glad you mentioned the scholarships. I was remiss in acknowledging that, and both, as both my children, uh, received those scholarships, and that was very helpful.
Yeah, very important.
Yeah, thank you.
Hugh, I can jump in?
Oh, sure. Make something up. Let's go.
I'm gonna make it up. Um, what I've learned from long study is that, uh, it was, it, the LVIS were early, uh, environmental fighters. They, they made good trouble, um, in the, in way, in the wayback days. Uh, it was the LVIS that prevented, uh, the pond from being drained and filled in in 1895. Imagine us without that beautiful pond, and here's another good one, that, uh, in 1902, when electric lights came in, it was the LVIS that made sure that they would be buried, the lines would be buried. They're my kind of people. Um, and also, coming more up to date in the 1970s, when they thought that there would be impacts to all the, um, uh, beautiful houses that really form the character of LVIS, um, they, they formed, uh, a, uh, an area around town, a town pond to be placed on the National Register of Historic Places to maintain the architecture. So, uh, boy, they made, they made good trouble back in the day. I feel like I had some forebears in, uh, fighting for environmental protection.
That was great, and thank you, Councilwoman Gonzalez, for the Amagansett Village Improvement Society. We should not have forgotten them. I just have a couple of things. Believe it or not, the Ladies Village Improvement Society is not the oldest women's organization in our town.
And you've got sewing society?
That's right, 1869.
I'm done, Peter.
Yes, and when the, um, the idea for the Ladies Village Improvement Society was first, first stated by the editor of the East Hampton Star, Edward Bowden. He's the one who suggested that they, uh, the ladies form a society, and in the beginning, there was all local women who started the Ladies Village Improvement Society. It wasn't until 1911 that summer residents were allowed to, uh, join. Okay, great. Now, I want to talk about the Fisher Place. I was watching last week, um, when Dick White showed up. Did, uh, you know why he knows so much about this? Did he tell you that he was there when Carl Fisher built the house in 1920?
Yeah.
25, he didn't tell you that, did he? Yeah.
I knew that. I'd spoken with him, but, you know.
Yeah, okay, well, the idea, I think you might, you might probably have a willing partner in the Montauk Historical Society, it seemed to me, from the, from the, the, the show I was watching. But this gives, to me, this gives us a chance to talk about three different individuals and their family who either shaped Montauk or could have shaped Montauk if they were successful. The first, of course, is Arthur Benson, who built the association houses, but he did some other things that weren't so great, okay? Then it was Austin Corbin, who wanted to make Montauk, um, a deep-sea port. And then there was Carl Fisher, and Mr. Bent, and Mr. Corbin and Mr. Fisher, their ideas did not come to fruition. And I think it's good to talk about all three of those people when you get, if, when and if you get the Fisher House, you know, up to speed. I think it's a good time to talk about those three people. That's it. I'm done.
Great, thank you so much, Hugh.
Next week, next month, next meeting, it's the East Hampton Historical Society. Um, last year was their 100th anniversary, so we could find out some interesting things about the East Hampton Historical Society. But Councilwoman Gonzalez, do you want to do the Amagansett Historical Association?
You tell me. You tell me.
Yeah, go ahead, do that, all right?
Okay.
They should get some recognition, too. All right, thank you. Thank you for doing all this work.
Thank you, Hugh. Thanks for keeping our history alive.
Well, you're doing it, too.
Carol, if you'd please read the first public hearing notice?
I will read the COVID disclosure for all the hearings first. "Please note that due to public health and safety concerns related to COVID-19, the town board is not expected to meet in person at the time of this hearing. Pursuant to the New York State Legislature's adoption of an amendment to Subpart A and Part BB of the laws of 2021 Part E, which authorizes political subdivisions to permit any public body to hold meetings remotely without an in, a public in-person access by conference call or similar service provided that the public has the ability to view or listen to such proceedings, and that such meetings are recorded and later transcribed. This public hearing of the town board can be held via video conferencing with a transcript provided at a later date pursuant to such authority. The public can watch and participate in the public hearings live on local TV Channel 22 and live online from the public meetings link on the LTV website. Members of the public may provide comments on the matter being heard by calling the number available on the live stream. Comments may also be submitted and will continue to be accepted in writing by the town clerk by email to c-brennan@ehamptonny.gov or by mail to the town clerk, 159 Panago Road, East Hampton. Comments must be received within one week of the posting of the public hearing transcript. A transcript of the public hearing held by video conferencing will be prepared and filed with the town clerk and placed on the town's website. Please check the meeting agenda posted on the town's website for any changes to the instructions to access the public hearing or for updated information. Notice is hereby given that the town board of the town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 7th at 2:00 p.m. or soon thereafter as this matter may be heard. To consider comments of all persons on the Boys and Girls Management Plan update. Suffolk County Tax Act 392-111.1 and 74-530.2. A full text of the management plan is available for inspection at the office of the town clerk during regular business hours of 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, exclusive for holidays, and on the town's website."
Thank you, Carol. Do we have any callers on the line?
Yes, we do. I shall unmute the first caller.
Let's ask if they're calling in for this particular hearing.
Hello, caller, ending 5981. You're on the air. Hello, caller, uh, ending in 59, uh, 5916. My dyslexia kicked in. 5916.
Okay, yeah, that's me. Uh, do you hear me?
Yes, are you calling about the Boys and Girls Harbor Management Plan hearing?
No, no, I'm actually calling about the balloon ban.
Okay, if you'll just stay on the line, and we'll get to you during public comments?
Okay.
For that hearing?
Okay, uh, going to the next caller. Caller ending 6643. You're on the air. Hello, caller?
Hello?
Hello?
Yeah. I, I'm also calling about the balloon, it's Maureen Blue Jordan. I'm calling about the balloon ban.
Understood, thank you. Uh, Mr. Supervisor, that is the, uh, those are our only two callers that we have.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Carol, if you'd go to the next hearing notice, please?
Pursuant to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development Rules and Regulations of the town of East Hampton is required to hold a public hearing on or make available to the public the plan for the operation of the Housing Choice Voucher Program. Section 8 Rental Assistance Program, the comprehensive administrative plan is part of the plan. The draft of the plan shall be available for inspection at the office of Housing and Community Development located at 267 Bluff Road in Amagansett between the hours of 9:00 and 4:00 prevailing time starting August 20th, and will be available on the town's website. In order to be considered for comments on the draft of the plan, must be submitted in writing to Thomas C. Rule, Director of Housing and Community Development, 159 Panago Road, East Hampton, before 3:00 p.m. October 6th, or introduced at a public hearing to be held on October 7th at 2:00 p.m. or soon thereafter as this matter may be heard by the town board of the town of East Hampton.
Thank you, Carol. Do we have any new callers on the line, Jason?
Yes, we do. We have two new callers on the line. I'm muting right now.
And we'll ask if they are calling in for the Section 8 Administrative Plan comments.
Understood. Hello, caller, ending 5027. You're on the air.
Hi, uh, I am calling because I was watching your show today, and I hear that next week, or next meeting, you are going to, um, notice that the East Hampton Historical Society and the Amagansett Historical Society are, um, going to be a topic. Uh, I was wondering why the Springs Historical Society can't be added to that particular, um, discussion.
Okay, well, they certainly can be, and thank you for calling in.
And who was calling?
Who's calling, please?
Who was it?
Deanna Tocannon, and I am, uh, the president of the Springs Historical Society.
Very good.
Thank you, Deanna, yeah.
Thanks for calling, Deanna.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I shall unmute the next caller. Hello, caller, ending 5479. You're on the air.
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm calling about the balloon hearing.
Oh, thank you very much. I'll note that.
Stay tuned. Thank you. Do we have any other callers?
That is it.
I'll entertain a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Carol, if you'd read the next hearing notice, please?
Notice is hereby given that the town board of the town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 7th at 2:00 p.m. or soon thereafter as this matter may be heard. To consider comments of all persons regarding an amendment to Chapter 84, Balloons, an abstract of which follows. "A local law to update the definition of balloon and to add a prohibition starting January 1, 2022 prohibiting the sale of balloons filled with helium or other light, lighter-than-air gas."
Do we, we, I believe we have two or three callers for this hearing, Jason?
Yeah, yes, we do. We have four of them, and I shall unmute them in the order that I got them. And so, I'm muting the first caller now. Hello, caller, 5916. You are on the air.
Uh, thank you. Yes, this is, uh, my name is Brian Chalker. Um, I'm a resident of, uh, East Hampton up in Northwest Woods. Um, uh, and I'm also a business owner at the Crane Surfboard Shop in Amagansett. Um, and I'm also a, uh, I'm on the executive committee for Surf Rider. Um, so I've been working with Surf Rider, um, on this balloon ban, um, because we spend a lot of time cleaning up the beaches here in town, uh, and we find a lot of these balloons. And I know they're not all coming from East Hampton, but doing our part, um, I think it's important. I think it's a good message to send. Um, I was working with some of the youth at the Avenue School who got a petition together. We did a beach cleanup. Uh, the youth are excited about it. Um, I think that, you know, the idea that we need balloons to celebrate something is, uh, it's just kind of outdated, so I would, I would urge the council to, uh, pass the balloon ban.
Thank you for taking the time to call us, Brian. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Moving on to next caller. Hello, caller, ending 6643. You are on the air. Hello, caller, ending 6643. You are on the air. I'll cycle back to that.
Very good. Thank you, Jason.
Hello, caller, ending 5479. You're on the air.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can. Good afternoon.
Oh, hi. Good afternoon, Supervisor and members of the town board. Uh, my name is Jen Hartnagle, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Group for the East End. I'm calling in today to lend our strong support for the amendment to Chapter 84, Title Balloons. Um, we at the group have firsthand experience with balloons or their parts, and their presence on our beaches, in our bays and marshes, and, uh, during our frequent beach cleanups. It's highly, highly unusual for us to have a beach cleanup and not find balloons everywhere. In fact, in most of our beach cleanups, we find multiple balloons, um, in a single event. Unfortunately, they're absolutely out there, and they make their way into the environment. And time and time again, we have read about, and we see firsthand the documented impacts the balloons have on wildlife, from marine mammals to birds and fish species. You don't have to search far to find this evidence. Marine-focused organizations here and nationally can and have attested to the dangers that these balloons pose to wildlife, including the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, both authorities on these matters. It's really not even questionable at this point in time, the damage that they create. As we have witnessed firsthand throughout our region with the plastic bag issue, education only took us so far, and it wasn't until the legislation was adopted that banned the bags, that measurable differences in plastic bag use appeared. And unfortunately, we believe that we're at this point with the balloons, and we strongly favor the ban of the sale of these specific types of balloons for these same reasons. The release of the balloons and their widespread use, it's a habit of the past, as the previous speaker had just mentioned. We know too much about the dangers they pose to our environment to not do something about it. We learn very quickly and probably painlessly to live without the plastic bags, and we believe that we can do the same in the circumstance with the balloons. The town of East Hampton is not alone. Uh, neighboring Southampton recently passed almost identical legislation, and all over the U.S., municipalities and states have either already adopted similar legislation, or they're moving, um, in this direction. And time and time again, the town of East Hampton, you have stood as an example for other East End municipalities, and even regionally, by adopting forward-thinking environmental legislation. And we ask that you continue to serve as that model by adopting this legislation and bringing the South work together in this approach. Group for the East End would like to thank everyone at the town and in the community who worked very hard to continue to ensure that this issue, um, was addressed, and we want to thank you in advance for your support for this measure. Thank you.
Thanks so much for calling in, Jen, and thank you to the Group for the East End for all you do, helping to protect our environment.
Thank you.
Jason, go to the next caller, please.
Doing so right now, and I, the person who was unresponsive, they just rejoined, so I'm going to try to get back. Hello, caller, ending 6643. You're on the air.
Hi, hi, it's Maureen.
Hi, hi, it's Maureen Blue Jordan, and I'm a resident of, um, East Hampton, um, and I was technology unresponsive, trying to figure out how to mute and unmute. Um, I am calling to speak for the resolution that we ban the balloons. Uh, each morning, I walk my dogs on the beach with a couple other people, and there isn't a day that has gone by this summer where we don't perform balloon collection. Uh, I feel like I should work for the town and the village, uh, where we perform, um, picking up the balloons and plastics that washed up on the beach. And this continues to be a serious threat to our wildlife, uh, the birds, as well as the fish. And, um, it, it's quite shocking sometimes to go by the larger houses along the beach and actually see them having, you know, a hundred or so balloons for some party that they're about to have helium balloons that, um, are, have been put up for whatever the event is going to be. You just know that they're going to end up in the ocean and back up on the beach. So, I'm at this point where I, I do think that we should be more progressive about our environment and, uh, put in stricter measures relative to, uh, protection of the wildlife and, uh, our vital climates. Thank you, and thank you for your support in advance.
Thank you, Maureen, appreciate you calling in, giving us, uh, your comments, and also for taking the time and taking it upon yourself as a private citizen to help keep our beaches clean, so thank you for that especially.
Okay, moving on to next caller. And let me unmute. Hold up. Caller ending 8653, you're on the air, hello.
Hello, um, my name is Tipper Lynn. I'm a resident of Southampton and a member and former chair of our Sustainability Advisory Committee. I wanted to give you some highlights from the research Southampton did before our law was passed in June. Uh, some points are obvious and others are less so. First, of course, balloons are littered. In Southampton, more than 85,000 helium-filled balloons per year are used once and discarded in the town. The discarded balloons, of course, some end up in the landfill, but many kill mammals and seabirds who consider them food. Mylar balloons cause electrical outages. PSEG reports in their service area a 26% increase from this car in the past five years. Latex balloons, even those that are considered quote biodegradable, unquote, really take years if ever to degrade, mylar balloons never degrade. Helium is a valuable, non-renewable scarce resource. It's used to cool MRI machines, such as the ones some have used at Southampton Hospital, and for other scientific and industrial purposes. It's valuable. Finally, I personally, as part of our research on this, contacted five towns in the Northeast that passed identical laws to find out what their experience and response was from the public. The feedback was uniformly positive, uh, in some cases, quite enthusiastic. So, we would appreciate East Hampton and Southampton supporting this together, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much for taking the time to call us today. Appreciate it.
Okay, that is the end of our new callers, and I also have Susan McGraw-Kiefer in the waiting room, Aisha Leterin, yes?
Sure, please, yeah, we have our trustee, uh, town trustee Susan McGraw-Kiefer has been instrumental in moving this, uh, proposed legislation along and lobbying for it and collecting signatures and advocates, so welcome today, Susan. If you want to take a moment or two and just make a comment.
She's muted right now, she's unmuted, she was unmuted shortly.
Hi, everybody, uh, thanks so much for having me, I'll be very brief. Um, everything that everyone has said prior to my coming on this afternoon is absolutely true, and I would like to let you know that I sent all of you brochures and, uh, with letters, and I wanted to quickly read those if I have time to do so.
If you would, uh, I don't know how many are in the packet, it's, it's rather thick, we have them all, if you want to.
Okay.
Take a couple select, a couple select comments is fine.
Okay, for the public, there are, um, 33 letters of support, um, all from national organizations, local businesses, local residents, and I wanted to just, um, let you know that, um, Tip said about helium, which is a non, uh, it's the only natural resource that cannot be, uh, renewed. And I think that's very important, since what he said is very true, once it's gone, it's gone. Um, last spring when I presented to you, I, uh, brought the East Hampton High School, the Avenue, uh, Studio School, and also the Middle School, and I have to ask, if children know that balloons are bad for our environment, then who are we selling them to? Um, I'm not here today to hurt anyone's business, but I am here to offer, um, different ideas to stores that sell balloons so that they can become known as an environmentally sound and, um, exciting store that is protecting our coastal, uh, bodies of water and our ponds, animals, birds, and so forth. So I'd like to thank you very much for considering this, um, ban on the, uh, sale and distribution of mylar foil, petroleum fossil fuel, and latex balloons, and latex balloons, I have just been recently reading are, in fact, uh, when they become a commercial product, they are treated with chemicals, so that's another reason not to have latex balloons. So, I thank you very much, and I hope that you will seriously consider this next step as Southampton has, and I wish you all a good afternoon.
Thank you for your efforts, Susan, and your comments today. Appreciate it.
All right, so long, everybody.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Sylvia. Thanks, everybody.
Do we have any other callers on the line, Jason?
There are no new callers on the line.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Didn't get a second.
Sorry, second, but I was muted. Aye.
All in favor, passing, carried, yeah, okay.
Lost that second there, sorry.
Yeah, the second was on mute, but we got it. Kathy seconded. Uh, Carol, if you'd please go to the next hearing notice.
Pursuant to Section 247 of the General Municipal Law and Chapter 16 of the Town Code of the Town Board of the Town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 7th, 2:00 p.m., or sooner thereafter as this matter may be heard to hear comments of all persons wishing to be heard concerning the following grant of scenic and conservation easement to the Town of East Hampton. The grantor is Montauk Sea Stone LLC, Samantha Chandra is the sole member, it's a scenic and conservation easement dated July 26th, the location is 4 Captain Ballfo Way in Montauk, 30918.19, and the reviewing agency is the Zoning Board of the Feds. Any person wishing to comment upon this matter may do so.
Thank you, Carol. Do we have any callers on the line, Jason?
We have no callers on the line.
I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Carol, if you'd go to the next hearing notice, please.
Pursuant to Section 247 of the General Municipal Law and Chapter 16 of the Town Code of the Town Board of the Town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 7th, 2:00 p.m., or sooner thereafter as the same may be heard to hear comments of all persons wishing to be heard concerning the following grant of scenic and conservation easement to the Town of East Hampton. The grantor is Andrew Foglia and Molly Nolan, it's a scenic and conservation easement dated August 27th at 22 South Jennifer Court in Montauk, Suffolk County Tax Map 328313, the reviewing agency is the ZBA.
Thank you, Carol. Any callers on the line now, Jason?
There are no callers on the line.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry. Carol, if you'd go to the next hearing notice, please.
Pursuant to Section 247 of the General Municipal Law and Chapter 16 of the Town Code of the Town Board of the Town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 7th at 2:00 p.m., or sooner thereafter as the same may be heard to hear comments of all persons wishing to be heard concerning the filing grant of a scenic and conservation easement to the Town of East Hampton. The grantor is Barry Schwartz and Patrick Kane, Seismic and Conservation dated August 3rd at 44 Cliff Road in East Hampton, Suffolk County Tax Map 30173, 217 and 18, and the reviewing agency is the ZBA.
Thank you, Carol. Do we have any callers on the line, Jason?
There are no callers on the line.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pass and carried. That concludes the public hearings for today. Do we have any callers on the line, Jason?
No, we do not.
Okay, let's move on to resolutions then. Kathy, I believe you have resolutions to offer. No, no callers on the line.
Okay, sorry, I apologize.
One caller, I apologize, one caller just came in right now as we said that.
Okay, let's go, let's go to public comment, and again, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Okay. Hello caller, you are on the air.
Hi, everyone, this is Miles Mayer. I have just come back to make some follow-up remarks from my previous comments at the last Town Board meeting, and I will make these shorter. Good morning, or I'm sorry, good afternoon, Mr. Supervisor and members of the Town Board. This is Miles Mayer, President of CSA for Town of East Hampton, and I have returned to address you all once again to discuss the ARPA federal funds that the town have received. After my public comment of September 23rd, I was told I would be receiving a written response from the board outlining and explaining how the town could spend and how the Town Board would be spending the ARPA federal funds. Unfortunately, I have not received any such documents. So I am here today in the interest of transparency, good government, and open discussion to request that the Town Board hold a public hearing to openly discuss these ARPA funds, how they should be used, how they can be used, and that the residents and the workforce deserve to be heard. I have and will continue to urge the Town Board to take into consideration as a top priority that the portion of these funds be earmarked and spent on the town's workforce, and in addition today, I am demanding a public, the public be heard as well. My second reason for speaking today is to ensure that there is no chance of mischaracterizations in the future, and for me to say that any disappointment that was felt from me speaking out on September 23rd by this board is misdirected. And any, any defensiveness by this board is, in my opinion, not necessary. So let's hold a public hearing regarding the ARPA funds, let the public be heard, and let's put these funds where they are needed and deserved. Let's get this right. Thank you.
Thank you, Miles, I appreciate, uh, you calling. What the board has decided to do is to have a public discussion at our next work session, uh, which was announced, I'm surprised you, you weren't aware of that. Uh, we will have our Budget Director come and review the Town Board's options as to what the money can be spent for, and, uh, I think, uh, you will also be having concurrently a discussion about the town budget and about regrades, uh, that I've proposed for many of the different workers within the town, uh, workforce. So, you know, we look forward to continuing this discussion. Uh, this is a very important issue, and it really will require, I think, the board's, uh, a board decision on how that money should be spent, but we should be fully aware, everyone should be fully aware of what the town's options are. Uh, and I, again, I appreciate you calling in today.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
You as well.
Do we have any other callers on the line, Jason?
We have no other callers.
Okay, then, I think we'll move on now, again with our resolutions. Kathy, have resolutions to offer?
Now, just, can I interrupt Kathy just for a second, because I'm going to be leaving the meeting right now. Kathy is doing my resolutions, and I appreciate it very much, Kathy, for you, um, doing that, taking on the extra work. And, um, I'm sorry I have to leave for, um, some personal reasons, but, uh, thank you all, and I will talk to you all soon.
Sylvia, wish you well, and I hope everything works out.
Yep, thank you. Everything seems to be good, thanks. All right, take care.
You too, bye-bye. Okay, Kathy, you want to move forward with your resolutions?
Sure, starting with Resolution 2021-1100, its approval of the warrant claims total $3,116,389.88, and the utility warrant total $62,467.75.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Resolution 1101 is to notice for public hearing, amending the posting of the speed limit is per Section 240-52 of Chapter 240 Vehicles and Traffic. This is on 3 Mile Harbor-Hod Creek Highway, it goes from Copices Lane to Kings Point Road, and right now it's posted at 35 miles per hour, and we're looking to go to 30 miles per hour. And that public hearing would be held on Thursday, October 21st at 11 o'clock.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
1102 is to revise Resolution 2021-983, reimburse notary license fee to D'Artagnan Laris in the amount of $75.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
1103 is an agreement with Suffolk County AAA Transportation, and that's to enter into an agreement with the Suffolk County Office of the Aging to provide transportation services for the elderly program and case management.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
1104 is approval of various special event permits, Hampton's Pride Halloween on the Green at the Wayne Scott Green on Sunday, October 31st from 3:00 to 5:00. The Tyler Project, Tyler Vouchik Project Car Cruise on various town roads, Sunday, October 10th from 3:00 to 4:30. The Tyler Project, Tyler Vouchik Project Car Show at the Amagansett Fire Department, Sunday, October 10th from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The Montauk PTA, Montauk School Annual Halloween Parade on South Embassy Street and Montauk Highway on Sunday, October 31st from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And the Montauk Point Lighthouse Museum, their annual holiday lighting of the lighthouse at the lighthouse on Saturday, November 27th from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m.
I'll second that, I'm very happy to hear the Lighthouse was able to work that out.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
1105 is a budget modification for human services, and we're moving $12,000 from various lines to building maintenance and supplies and other equipment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Resolution 2021-1106 is to adopt local law to amend Chapter 255 to clarify the code as to accessory buildings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
1107 is to increase the cap for the Raynor Group and to do a budget modification. We're increasing the cap for services from $20,000 to not to exceed $25,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
1108 is an account correction to previous resolutions as a particular account number was truncated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
1109 is the payment of legal fees to Regano LLC for work that was done in 2020 in the amount of $900.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Resolution 1110 is a resolution to electrify HVAC systems in East Hampton municipal buildings. We discussed this at Tuesday's work session, and it resolves that the Town Board will instate an HVAC system electric, electrification policy to assure the timely transition of HVAC systems away from fossil fuels in existing municipal buildings, as well as incorporate electric HVAC systems into the design of all future municipal buildings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Resolution 1111 is to release security for urban renewal parcel 25B in EH17. The applicant is 28 Thomas Investors LLC at 30 Thomas Avenue in the amount of $12,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Like offer Resolution 2021-1112, uh, this is for land acquisition for Seymour and Grinnell. This is a scheduled public hearing for the CPF Project Plan Edition. Uh, the Town Board elected to amend the plan as most recently adopted on September 2nd, 2021. The town board elected amended plan as most recently adopted on September 2nd, 2021, at approximately .22 acres of land at 38 Cedar Drive in Springs. If acquired, the parcel will remain a pocket for Wildlife Reserve area.
Second.
All in favor?
I apologize. The public hearing is on October 21st, 2021, 11 a.m.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
11113 is again for Seymour and Grinnell, scheduled public hearing for the CPF Acquisition and Amendment 2021 Management and Stewardship Plan. Reporter ownership is Iris Seymour and Christine Grinnell at 38 Cedar Drive Springs, tax map 300-39-15-23, approximately 22, .22 acres of land, and it is going to be donated to us at the cost of the town for reasonable survey tax, prorated tax, and recording charges from the CPF funds. The public hearing will be held also on the 21st of October at 11 a.m.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
1114 is again 28 BF, 30 Bear Family and 32 BF Holdings LLC to schedule a public hearing for the CPF Project Plan Edition, where the tax maps of these properties are 300-193.3.11.7, 11.8, 11.9. Public hearing will be October 21st, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
11115 is a scheduled public hearing for the real property acquisition and amended 2021 Management and Stewardship Plan. Owners again is 28 BF Holdings LLC, 30 Bear Family Holdings LLC, and 32 BF Holdings LLC. The properties are at 28, 30, and 32, Green Hollow Road in East Hampton. Tax map is 300-193-3-11.7, 11.8, 11.9. The proposed purchase price is $6,845,000. There also will be a monetary contribution of $2,645,000 towards this purchase. Scheduled hearing date of October 21st, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
11116 is to appoint part-time assistant buildings maintenance supervisor Kevin Ahern at an hourly rate of $32.53 per hour effective October 12th, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome back, Kevin.
Pass and carry.
Resolution 2021-1117 is to appoint part-time recreational aide Dennis Wood Monzon at an hourly rate of $15 per hour effective October 8th, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Resolution 2021-1118 is the termination of various seasonal parks employees from 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
11119 is status change from seasonal to part-time for parks employees. This will be effective September 18th, 2021 for various employees stated below.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Resolution 2021-1120 is termination of seasonal recreational, various seasonal recreational employees from 2021 as stated below.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
11121 is acceptance of donations for the Laura Simonson Skate Park. Again, this is for the proposed upkeep and potential future expansion of the skate park. $150,000 donation from Steve and Liz Biggar, and also $100,000 from John D. Britton II. They will go into established reserve account.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. We thank them for their very generous donations.
Agreed. Resolution 2021-1122 is accepted bid EH21-034 for the printing and miscellaneous forms for September 2021. We're going to go to Montauk Printing. It's hereby accepted items for 1A, 1B, 2B, 2C, 2D, 3BE, 3C, 3D, 4A, 4B, 4C, 8A, 8B, 9A, 9B, and 9C. And then effects of color is hereby accepted for items 2A, 3A, 6, and 7.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Various letters and numbers.
Yes, thank you. Got my self-call there. Okay, resolution 1123 is authorized payment for prior year's invoice for the highway department. The invoice was dated on 2/12/2020 to Granger for $169.43.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
I have 1124 authorized payment for prior year invoice for highway department. The invoice date was from 7/2/2020 to Emergency Mechanical Services for the amount of $566.50 for invoice 9/2/27.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
1125 is a notice of bidders for EH21-039 for the purchase and delivery of jet skis. This is a rebid again of number two bid. The bid is available for October 7th, 2021. The bid is due back October 28th, 2021. Any questions, please contact our purchasing department, our purchasing department at Town of East Hampton at 631-324-4141.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
1126 is a joint modification, sorry, budget modification for the joint fuel facility through the increased town and village consumption. We're taking from budget line for services, other governmental, village of East Hampton in the amount of $13,350 and bringing it to miscellaneous revenues for the town departments in the amount of, I apologize, we're taking $13,350 for services and other government village of East Hampton, and also from budget line for miscellaneous revenues in the amount of $36,650, and increasing the budget line for fuel purchases in the amount of $50,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
One moment. 1127 is a budget modification for the highway department, modifying, taking from drainage maintenance in the amount of $20,000, bringing it to subcontract costs in the same amount of $20,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
1128 is the Sept proposal for engineering services for the second house restoration phase three. This is for a proposal received from DB Engineering that was dated on September 29th, 2021, to provide such services for phase three at a cost not to exceed $9,700.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
1129 is a secret determination for the Lionsfield IA System Upgrade. The town board finds that the above referenced project is classified as type 2 actual under secret pursuant to 6 NYCRR Part 1, 6.7.5(c)(2), and thus no further environmental reviews required.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Resolution 2021-1130 is the 2021 Annual Turkey Trot for Fun, where the Town of East Hampton Rec Department will be ducking the 45th Annual Run for Fun, so everyone get ready. The race is beginning on Montauk Plaza 8 a.m. sharp, and it's going to be 3.1 miles around the pond. Just to let everyone know, it's not in the resolution. Anyway, the road race is sponsored by the town Recreation and Parks Department, and a requirement for a hold Harlemus agreement and certificate naming the insurance, naming the town as a co-insured is hereby waived.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
And then go on to hang it with your family and get tryptophan. Okay, sorry. I digress. I'd like to offer resolution 2021-1131. This is the approval of itsyourace.com for online registration for the Turkey Run for Fun, and which Long Island Running was selected to provide technical and timing support. Itsyourace.com is going to be authorized to utilize itsyourace.com for online registration of calendar year 2021 Turkey Run for Fun.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Which starts at 8 a.m. at the Montauk Plaza, and all the proceeds are donated to the food pantries for the Town of East Hampton. And again, and resolution 2021-1132 is the approved Long Island Running Incorporated for the 2021 Turkey Run for Fun. Again, their annual Turkey Run for Fun now is November 25th, 2021. Starting when? 8 a.m. Where? Montauk Plaza. You can register online at itsyourace.com. And let's see, they're going to provide technical timing, including staff, for this event.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Now that we're done talking turkey, Councilman Bregman, you have resolutions to offer?
Resolution 1133 is accepting a bid for compliance work at the airport. And I don't see an amount here, actually, but this is for maintaining the fuel farm.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Resolution 1134 is to increase the cap for Cooley LLP as outside airport counsel, and the amount is not to exceed $400,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, pass and carry.
Resolution 1135 is to increase the cap for Regano LLC as environmental counsel in an amount not to exceed $30,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass and carry.
Resolution 1136 is a budget modification in Justice Court moving $3,700 from travel conferences and dues to office expense.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, pass and carry.
Resolution 1137 is to authorize a pilot agreement for the Three Mile Harbor Road, East Hampton Housing Authority project, and the resolution deals with the fact that the East Hampton Housing Authority is exempt from paying local and municipal taxes and has offered to make voluntary annual payments in lieu of the taxes that would otherwise be generated. And the resolution authorizes the supervisor to execute the agreement in the form that was previously approved.
Can I just ask a question? Is it, it's in the Spring School District?
No, it's not.
It's not?
East Hampton School District.
The third whereas says Spring School District.
So shall we, in a second, as amended?
Yeah, I should say East Hampton Union Free School District. Wherever it's stated. I don't know if it's just that one spot.
Right.
Yes, it is.
I believe it's just that one spot.
So, second as amended, Carol, in the third whereas clause. And actually, it says, children residing in, it's twice in the whereas clause, should say.
Right.
286 and 293 Mile Harbor Road in East Hampton.
East Hampton. So we have a second as amended. All in favor?
Hold on a minute. Say the last part. What did you just say? The third whereas clause should read, "The subject property lies within the East Hampton Union Free School District, which will be responsible for the free public education of school-aged children residing at 286 and 293 Three Mile Harbor Road in East Hampton." Thank you.
Okay, so we have a second as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Resolution 2021-1138 is to appoint part-time office assistant Ram Kumar Subramaniam, and that is for an hourly rate of $17.98 effective October 12th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, pass and carry. Resolution 1139 is to amend CSCA Schedule A, add assistant building maintenance supervisor title, and that is to CSCA Schedule A to hereby be amended and reflect the addition of assistant building maintenance supervisor at grade 28, starting step $29.45 per hour, effective October 8th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass and carry. 1140 is authorization of the Town of East Hampton to submit an application to the New York Department of Environmental Conservation for electric people charging stations. This was reviewed at our last work session.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, pass and carry. 1141 is notice of proposal Georgia Capon at Route 27 rest stop stormwater abatement technical design reproposal, RFP number EH2021-109. Proposal is available October 7th, 2021, and due on October 28th, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have a third aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we got unanimous here. It's okay, pass and carry. Uh, let's see. Resolution 1142 is notice of bidders EH21-040, printing of sanitation permits and other forms, 2021. Bid is available October 7th, 2021. Bid is due back on October 28th, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Resolution 1143 is notice of bidders. Bid number is EH21-041, Springs Library Roof Replacement and Rebid. Bid available October 14th, 2021, and due back on November 10th, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. 1144 is to extend agreement RFP EH2019-104, Professional Auditing and Accounting Services for the Town of East Hampton, and that goes to Nirocky Smith LLP, with a rate schedule posted, and the impact to the financial is $95,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Resolution 1145 is for a budget modification in the Ordnance Enforcement Department, and that is moving $6,000 from part-time salaries and $3,000 from computer equipment to shift differential, $3,000, office expense in $3,000, and uniform in $3,000.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry. Resolution 1146 is budget modification for natural resources. That's moving $800 from part-time salaries to $800 in dental and optical benefits.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. 1147 is a budget modification for purchasing department, and that is moving $500 from part-time employee to $370 in office expense and $130 in furniture.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass and carry. 1148 is budget modification, civil defense. That's moving $450 from contingent to $450 in telephone.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. 1149 is reimburse assistant town attorney David McMaster for attorney registration fee in the amount of $375.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, pass and carry. 1150 is a payout resignation Elizabeth Kearns, and that will be to issue a check for payroll account, 24 vacation hours at $18.34 for a gross payout of $440.25.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. 1151 is to payout resignation for Jameson McWilliams, and that is resolved to issue a check for payroll, appropriate payroll account for 200.75 hours vacation and 85.6250 compensatory hours at $44.13 per hour for a gross total of $12,639.05.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, pass and carry. 1152 is a payout on resignation, Thomas Crouch, and that is to authorize from the appropriate payroll account for compensatory time in the amount of $3,613.10 less $187.21 for vacation, plus $1,875 in prorated healthcare opt-out incentive for 2021 for a total of $5,389.89.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. 1153 is a payout for retirement, Maxine Nathaniel, and that is resolved, finance authorized, cut a check through the appropriate payroll account for sick time in the amount of $199.55, compensatory time in the amount of $129.82. For sick time in the amount of a hundred and ninety-nine dollars fifty-five cents, compensatory time in the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. Prorated longevity two thousand four hundred dollars less seven hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty cents in vacation pay for a gross total Of one thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have a couple of additional resolutions that I mentioned in my liaison report. They did not get into the system and have them to offer As a walk-ons. They are the naming of various preserves and parks and dedication. The first one is resolution ID number 26728. And that's the naming of the preserve for Seal Downs at 958 Springs Fireplace Road. And if the board would like, I'll read the resolution.
Please.
Whereas Seal Downs was an abstract painter who moved to Springs in nineteen fifty-four with her husband. The painter Sheridan Lord and whereas Seal Downs was a contemporary and friend of Jackson Pollock and Lee Krasner, James Brooks and Charlotte Park and other others in the Springs artist community. Whereas Ms. Downs played a significant role in the nineteen seventies women's movement on the east end. Whereas Seal Downs is known for her involvement in land preservation efforts particularly in Springs As a founder of the Akabonic Protection Committee. And longtime advocate for the protecting protection of Akabonic Harbor. Whereas Seal Downs lived more than sixty years at 958 Springs Fireplace Road before passing away in August 2020. At which time her property was acquired by the town. Whereas the town board wishes to recognize the lifelong dedication and contributions of and Seal Seal Downs. Therefore be it resolved that the town board hereby Designates the one point three five acre property located at 958 Springs Fireplace Roads Road as the Seal Downs Town Nature Preserve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Resolution ID number 26729 Is the naming of a preserve for Nancy Kelly, eight eighty and eight eighty-eight Springs Fireplace Road.
Your resolution or?
Have the resolution. It's whereas Nancy Kelly grew up in East Hampton and settled in Springs Where she spent four decades as an influential figure in the South Forks environmental movement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't get through the whole thing.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass and carry. Thank you. Resolution ID number 26730. Lee A. Hayes Amagansett Youth Park Dedication. Whereas Lee A. Hayes grew up in the town of East Hampton from the age of eight. Settling here in nineteen thirty with his family. And whereas Lee Hayes is well-known for being a member of the legendary Tuskegee Airmen. The all-black group of nine hundred and ninety-six pilots who served in World War II. Named for the base where they trained in Tuskegee, Alabama. Whereas Mr. Hayes served as second lieutenant in the Tuskegee Airmen Helping to break the color barrier in the US military despite rampant racial discrimination. And whereas after he received his official pilot certification following World War II, Lieutenant Lee Hayes Continued to face discrimination and inequality in civilian life unable to obtain a job as a pilot With the rapidly growing commercial airline industry. Whereas Lieutenant Hayes persevered and worked manual labor jobs. He was able to acquire a parcel of land in East Hampton where he built a home and settled with his wife Marion Jones for decades. Raised a family and still has ties to the community. Whereas the town of East Hampton wishes to honor the incredible achievements of Lieutenant Lee Hayes. Therefore be it resolved, the town board hereby dedicates the Amagansett Youth Park located at 206 Town Lane For the former Tuskegee Airmen Lee A. Hayes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. I'll entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Stay safe and be well.